We're good to go.
We are.
Okay. Hello, everyone. Council meeting for July fourteenth, two thousand twenty, and it's five thirty P M. You have order twenty dash sixteen regarding compliance with Oregon's public meeting laws. City of social distancing requirements during the coronavirus virus pandemic. The work session is me. The meeting will be conducted virtually using the Zoom platform, the Zoom access instructor. Agenda. Members of the city council, staff and public all have access to this call. How comment is not part of this part of the meeting unless are you guys going to want public? I just assume that you didn't. Correct. Okay. Tonight we will start. Department of Land Conservation and Development also referred to as D L C D on the Housing Code Audit. House Bill two thousand one also referred to as H B two thousand one. So we'll. Could you call that there's not a quorum here, but we'll just continue on.
I can. Counselor Ripley. Counselor Nice. Counselor Tracy. Counselor Reisner. Counselor Todd.
Here.
Counselor Mercero.
Here.
Mayor Stimple. Mayor Stimple.
All right. So we're missing Matt. All right. Okay. So go ahead and get started with the present. A weird one. So bear with us.
Well, thank you all for having me here today. I wanted to just kind of mention first before we get started that D L C D, the Department of Land Conservation Development's regional representative for Gladstone in all of eastern Portland Metro, Jennifer Donnelly is here. And I don't, I wanted to ask Jennifer to kind of, if she has any kind of opening remarks to kind of kick off this meeting, that would be great.
Thanks, Ethan. Jennifer Donnelly, I'm your regional representative. And I've been working with Jackie Betts and John Southgate for actually a couple of years now on the housing. We started off the housing effort with a code audit last, um, last kind of biennium. And it was very successful. And now I'm working with the city on another grant. And so this is to comply with House Bill two thousand one. And so this presentation is to give you all kind of an overview of House Bill two thousand one and how it will relate to your work that you will be seeing coming before you. So that's it. Thanks, Ethan.
Yeah, thanks. Yeah. So as I'm pulling up the slide deck here, I want to just kind of mention apologies for all the stuff happening in the background. If you see lots, we're doing a little bit of a rearrange. So hopefully that's not too distracting. But yeah, like Jennifer said, so Hospital two thousand one, and I'm going to talk a little bit about Hospital two thousand three. Those together are Oregon's housing initiatives. This is kind of a suite of bills, two bills passed in the two thousand nineteen Oregon Legislature. And it has future, it has implications on the future of housing planning in the state of Oregon, especially for Portland Metro cities and cities over the population ten thousand. So Gladstone fits nicely into that cohort. So lots of changes in the future. We'll kind of go through. This is going to be really high level. We'll talk about some specifics of the bills. I really want to hear your questions that you might have about Hospital two thousand one and two thousand three. But, you know, informal presentation, stop me anytime. I'll try to keep an eye on the participants tab. And if you have a question, kind of raise your hand or kind of wave to me best you can. Or I'll ask Jennifer or Mayor Stimple to kind of help me with any questions that come up. So again, my name is Ethan Stockmeyer. I'm the Senior Housing Planner at the Department of Land Conservation Development. Again, talking about Hospital two thousand one and two thousand three. So what are these Oregon housing initiatives? So Hospital two thousand one, like Mayor Stimple said, is the bill about missing middle housing. And really, we call it the Housing Choices Bill because the intent of that bill is really to broaden the choices or the options for households across Oregon to really increase the availability of housing. You might have heard it referenced as the end of exclusionary single family zoning, which is another kind of description or explanation of the bill that we'll get into a little bit more detail. Hospital two thousand three is was passed kind of in unison with Hospital two thousand one. This one focuses on housing needs and housing production. So different than housing choice. This is really about getting additional units and facilitating the production of housing. So all of these bills have lots of information in them, as you might imagine. So we've got this holding place on the department website. We're calling the Housing Program webpage. We'll send these slides out after the meeting. That's a hyperlink that you can follow to find more information. So the Oregon Legislature sets the policy and our, our role as the department is to come up and establish the rules to implement that policy. So in order to do that, we've compiled a rulemaking advisory committee to assist us in that rulemaking process. There's lots of different aspects of both of these bill, house bills that need to really be fleshed out. And so that can be operationalized. So we've gathered stakeholders from across the state. Broad, both geographic diversity in that stakeholder process, but then also a diverse group of practitioners, elected officials, community organizations, advocate groups. It's a very large group of people. We actually had a meeting today and there is about fifty four people on the call. So lots of different perspective, lots of different ideologies and thought processes, which makes our process a lot better. So this group is advisory to staff. Ultimately, D L C D staff makes the recommendation to our Land Conservation Development Commission on proposed rule language. But we wouldn't be, wouldn't be even close without the rulemaking advisory committee. So very appreciative of their input. We've got a separate rulemaking webpage. This hosts all of the meeting materials. It notifies you of all of the meeting dates and it's got the recordings of the meeting if you're interested. Paired with the rulemaking advisory committee, there's a conversation about, there's a conversation needing to take place about really technical, in the weeds, detailed conversations that need to take place in order to operationalize these rules. So we've put together three separate technical advisory committees. And these technical advisory committees are really focused on the three major rulemaking efforts of these two bills. The first two, the medium and large city model codes, which is what we'll talk about most today. That's one separate technical advisory committee. There's a carve out in Hospital two thousand one that we'll talk a little bit about for infrastructure deficient areas. So we gathered a group of civil engineers and the like on, on that technical advisory committee. And then the one rulemaking effort out of Hospital two thousand three, the housing production strategies, which is a new requirement for cities over ten thousand in the state of Oregon. Okay. Any questions on the rulemaking process? Just generally, we're kind of, I would say in about the, to use a sports analogy, we're in about the fourth quarter of that rulemaking process. So it's coming to a close and we'll talk about that timeline as we get through this presentation today. I don't see any questions, so I will move on. So specifically on Hospital two thousand one, the Housing Choices Bill. So there are, as you might be familiar with, there's two different kind of breakdowns within Hospital two thousand one. And this is really, again, to facilitate the housing choice that provides additional options for households that maybe don't fit into a single family detached home or their lifestyle doesn't makes an apartment of complex, you know, multifamily unit, just not right for them. So kind of expanding the stock of housing and the diversity of housing in our cities. So there's different requirements for quote unquote, medium sized cities and large sized cities. And the distinction between a large sized city and a metro and a medium city is, medium city is defined as all Oregon cities outside of the Portland Metro boundary with a population between ten thousand and twenty five thousand. So these are cities like Pendleton, Ontario, Kuzbe, Newport, those larger sized, medium sized cities outside of the Portland Metro. The requirement for those sized cities is that they require or they allow for the development of a duplex unit on all lots and parcels that are zoned residentially and allow for the development of a detached, single family dwelling. This is different from the requirements for a large city, which is really more than just large cities. So the definition of large city is non Portland Metro, Metro cities of population twenty five or more. So you can think Salem, Eugene, Kaiser, those type of cities. Unincorporated cities within the metro boundary. So unincorporated areas of Clackamas, Washington and Multnomah County. And then all cities within the Portland Metro boundary with a population of more than one thousand. So even the smaller cities in the Portland Metro area that have a population over a thousand are still quote unquote, large cities. So the standard for the requirements for a large city is that same duplex standard for medium sized city allowance for a duplex on every lot and parcel. But then there's also this kind of what we call higher level middle housing requirement, which would state that the city should allow for triplexes, fourplexes, townhomes and cottage clusters in areas, very different language than the duplex standard in areas that are zoned residentially and allow for the development of single family detached home. And so that distinction between every lot and parcel and the duplex standard in, in areas in the large and metro cities is a really important distinction, knowing that the legislature intentionally did not require cities to allow these higher level middle, middle housing types on every lot and parcel. Okay. So within that general framework, the, the allowance for those higher level middle housing types as city is, has flexibility or is allowed flexibility to determine or to regulate the sighting and design of those middle housing types, so long as those standards do not cause unreasonable cost and delay to the development of middle housing. So this could be a standard that would make it more difficult for middle housing type to be developed. That would be invalid or that would go in the way of, or would not be compliant with Hospital two thousand one. So in order to help cities determine what a, an appropriate sighting and design standard is, the legislature required D L C D to create two versions or a version of the, of a model code that they can apply and use as kind of a guidepost for determining which standards are reasonable. So the department has kind of separated that effort into two versions on the model code, right? One for medium cities and one for large cities because those requirements are pretty different. So one for each of those cohorts of cities. And in the legislature, in the bill itself, it states that these model code standards should be written in a way where a city can apply them directly. So that serves as both a regulatory mechanism. So if a city doesn't meet the statutory deadline, which is for medium cities, they need to comply with Hospital two thousand one by June thirtieth of two thousand twenty one. For larger metro cities, that deadline is June thirtieth of two thousand twenty two. So if a city doesn't meet those deadlines and adopt appropriate middle housing provisions in their code, then the model code applies directly. And so there's that option. A city can adopt the model code kind of off the shelf or through inaction. And then there's also another path that a city can go through. So they can say, look, the model code that the department has written really doesn't work well for us. We need some other, we need some additional flexibility to determine the sighting and design standards that work best for our community. And so in order to determine what that kind of set, what that set of standards looks like and how we define which standards are reasonable, we've come up with a minimum compliance, a set of minimum compliance standards. And so this would be. So the difference between a model code language, we would say the standard for a duplex is the maximum height is like twenty five feet, right? That's a very specific standard. And then in the minimum compliance, we would say the maximum height that you apply to duplexes can be no more restrictive than the standard you apply to a single family detached home in the same zone. So it doesn't give a specific number. It gives the city flexibility to determine what number that is within the realm of unreasonable cost and delay. So that's kind of the framework that we're setting up. We've got this model code, which is really prescriptive, needs to be exact, needs to be very specific because it needs to be able to be applied to a city without further interpretation or amendment. And then the minimum compliance is where that flexibility for a city would really live. They can kind of work within there to make sure that the standards really work for them the best, best possible. So for the large and metro cities, we've kind of, like I said, we're in the middle of this process. So we've front loaded the work for medium cities because their timeline for implementation is earlier. Their deadline is next year as opposed to larger metro cities, which is a year and a half out. So we've front loaded the medium sized cities work and are really completing that actually next week. But we're in the middle of the rulemaking for larger metro cities and we've kind of called out these six major points of the rulemaking that really drive the conversation. So like I mentioned, the in defining in areas is kind of number one. That's the biggest conversation that's taking place at the moment. Of course, how we define the reasonable set of standards and that minimum compliance standard in that minimum compliance set of standards. The definition and configuration of a duplex and triplex and quadplex, do those need to be attached? Can they be detached? Do they have to look a certain way? That definition is really important to give guidance to cities on how they should administer those rules. Townhomes and cottage clusters, as you might imagine, those are really, really unique housing types that really need to fit within the context of a local jurisdiction. So it's really hard to think about a model code set of standards for a townhome and cottage cluster that can apply to Eugene, Gladstone and the city of Portland all at the same time. So we really need to, we, we made a concerted effort about really providing even more kind of wiggle room and elbow room for cities to determine which standards are right for them. And then that kind of goes along with this fifth one, but then parking standards specifically have always been a hot topic. So we're working through what is the right amount of parking for all of these housing types. So I've got a timeline up here. Like I mentioned, we just had our eighth rulemaking advisory committee meeting this afternoon. We're kind of right here in the process mid-July. So right here on meeting number eight, we're in the process for medium cities. Our commission is meeting for their regular meeting next week, next Thursday and Friday, where we hope to adopt the standards for medium sized cities so that those medium sized cities can really hit the ground running and use as much time as possible to get to that deadline for their local adoption process. Like I mentioned before, large and metro cities have an additional year beyond the medium sized cities to do that work. So we're hoping for adoption of the rules in November of two thousand twenty. So that'll give cities about a year and a half, just over a year and a half to do that work, which is luxurious considering the medium sized cities only have a year. All right. Any questions on all of that information? I know that was a lot of information, but I do want to get to your questions.
Have a question.
Yes.
So one, one question that keeps coming up. Urban growth boundary, unincorporated Clackamas County, do those residential sites as well? Or is it simply within urban growth boundary?
So it would be all of unincorporated Clackamas County in, in this case, which and Washington County and Multnomah County. However, there is a, the applicability only applies to urbanized areas of unincorporated county lands. And so that urbanized definition is really driven by the county. If they have sufficient roads and infrastructure and all that kind of the special districts. So the county is, the county will determine what those unincorporated urbanized areas look like. So.
Standing, there's all these developers that want to build cottage clusters all over in, you know, rural. I didn't think that would quite be the right fit.
Right. Yep. So we're
E U's. Is that also going to be a part of this or is that a separate issue?
I'm sorry, your mic keeps cutting out. I think you said eighty E U's.
Expanded eighty E U's. Is that also going to be a part of this conversation or?
So Hospital two thousand one, there are some later provisions in the bill that talk about some sighting and designs for, for eighty E U's, but really the, the meat of Hospital two thousand one focuses on duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, townhomes and cottage clusters. Yeah. So Senate Bill ten fifty one, which is the eighty U bill, really drives that conversation. Two thousand one makes some minor tweaks, but doesn't change it majorly.
So Ethan, when did you say that, that, that definition of areas would be determined?
Yeah. So we, this definition is actually changing by the hour. As it, as it were, we just had a, like I said, a meeting this afternoon where that was the primary topic of conversation. We have, we're coming to the end. As you can see, we only have about two meetings left of this group. We're coming to the end of that, of our time with the rulemaking advisory committee. So we're the, for sure, the definition will be refined by August fourth, which is not shown on this, this timeline, but that's our last technical advisory committee group meeting. And so we'll need to present a definition and they'll have to kind of give the general sign off of that definition so that we can bring a refined version of that to our rulemaking advisory committee at this August eighteenth meeting, this number nine meeting. The reason why that's such a hard and fast deadline is because our department is required to submit notice to the Secretary of State on September first, so that we can have a public hearing at our commission meeting in September twenty fourth and twenty fifth. So there is a hard and fast deadline. If it's, you know, it'll be published as part of the rulemaking advisory committee packet on seven days prior to August eighteenth, August eleventh, the one even have it before that for the TAC packet. So beginning mid-August is the answer to that question. And then for sure, a final, final proposed definition by September first, which will be public, you know, public, publicized widely. So there's some iterations between there. And I see. I saw somebody had a hand raised. Anybody see where that hand is? Jennifer.
Michael Milch and the attendees.
Oh, yes. Hopefully.
Okay. I think I was muted.
Ah, there we go.
Okay. Oh, and I don't know why you're just seeing my picture, but anyway, usually public citizen involvement is one of the central, you know, core elements of anything involving land use planning. If we are trying to adopt either model codes or, you know, our own codes that meet the minimum compliance, but we are required by law to comply with these, then if we have public hearings and there's a lot of public opposition to them, don't we, aren't we still required by law to go ahead and adopt the codes that are in compliance with, with what the legislature has done? How do you suggest handling public involvement or public hearings on codes where there is a compliance requirement?
Yeah, that's a good question. And that is something that, you know, plays into the entire local adoption process, right? The city can, they have flexibility, but there are sideboards on that flexibility based on the intent of Hospital two thousand and one. So the, the conversation at the local level and that's totally, how they want to have that conversation is totally up to them. But that conversation really needs to just be, try to fit within those sideboards the best that it can. There is potentially, and we're still working on it, there's some talk about, well, how do we provide the most flexibility to a local government as they go through their adoption process? And so as we sit here today on July fourteenth, I don't have a perfect answer for you, but really that conversation at the local level, at the end of the day, by June thirtieth of two thousand twenty two, the city of Gladstone will need to adopt at least some version of the minimum compliance standards to comply with Hospital two thousand one. But we're trying to elbow out as much flexibility as we can for the jurisdiction.
Thank you.
Yes.
And it's a difficult conversation, which is why we also received a grant to help with the community engagement piece. And we've brought on a consultant to do that because it is going to have to be some very succinct conversations with the community as we push through this for Gladstone. So that's a very good question, Michael. Thank you.
Okay. If there's not any other questions, and if there are, just stop me, but I will move on to the next piece, which is the infrastructure based time extension request, or as we lovingly call it, the IBTER process. And so this is a carve out in Hospital two thousand and one, where the legislature said, we understand that this is potentially a big ask for cities. And there may not be places in the city where there's infrastructure in place to accommodate the increased number of people and units that would result in a broad based change to the land use planning system and zoning in a city. So the, they've set up this infrastructure based time extension request process where a jurisdiction would be able to say, in this particular area of our city, we can show based on an analysis that we do, or just our public works department understands that there's a deficiency in the existing capacity. It's existing or expected to be deficient, that capacity by December thirty first of two thousand twenty three. So for the purposes of estimating that capacity, they can use that hard and fast deadline about, here's the expected development we could see in our city. At that point, we feel that we will be over capacity in a certain area of our city. Therefore, we are asking the state to allow us additional time to remedy that deficiency and delay the enactment of these middle housing provisions in that area until we have such time to remedy that. So this process is a little bit disconnected from the implementation timeline for cities. So medium sized cities are required to submit their IBTER request to the department for review by December thirty first of two thousand twenty, end of this year. So because of that, we don't want to wait any second longer to adopt those rules. And so we are bringing those rules to our commission at their meeting next week for the first hearing. And then we have called our commission back for a special meeting in the first week of August to adopt those rules, August fifth, potentially, so that cities can use those rules for their, to conduct their analysis to determine if they should apply for an IBTER, determine the, so that they can show or they can meet the requirements of the application and show how they meet the review criteria. For larger metro cities, the deadline for submitting an application to the department for review is June thirtieth of two thousand twenty one. So that's six month expanded time period for those larger metro cities as opposed to medium sized cities. And so this process is going to be a little bit, it's a very technical exercise. Our technical advisory committee assisted us in determining what the thresholds are for determining a deficiency of infrastructure in four infrastructure systems. That's transportation, water, sewer and stormwater. So those are the four infrastructure systems that a city can say, look, we just don't have the capacity to accommodate anticipated future growth of middle housing in a certain area of our city. And there's some calculation assumptions within the rules that would provide guidance to cities to determine that capacity issue. Any questions on the IBTER? I know it's a, it's a pretty technical exercise and one that's, you know, it will be interesting to see. It's a new process for the state.
So just to clarify, so the December two thousand twenty three information you have, those would be, would those be concrete numbers that we could use to determine whether or not we meet that capacity currently?
Yeah. So in the rules, then, and we built in some development assumptions, really pulled from the legislation. There's a section of Hospital two thousand one that talks about a three percent growth over a twenty year period in middle housing in cities. And so we've kind of brought that forward into this analysis saying that if a city can show that they anticipate additional growth, they can use three percent as a safe harbor. But if they can show But if they can show that there's additional, they anticipate additional growth, maybe there's a big greenfield site that now all of a sudden could potentially be developed as duplexes or triplexes or whatever. And the infrastructure isn't there, they can assume a higher rate of development to make that calculation synced up with the December 31st, 2023 timeline. So really, it's, it works out to be like something like a 3% growth over those, the two and a half years between now and 2023. And then for infill sites, we would assume like a 1% growth. So it's not a whole lot of anticipated growth, but if a city can say, look, we, we think that's a different number, then they can certainly use that different number. So I hope that answered your question.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, I think I've got, one hand, Darren Williams.
How about then, how about now?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Hey, what happens if the city does not meet those standards?
Yeah, so then the city would be kind of on the hook for implementing those middle housing provisions. So in the case where an infrastructure-based time extension request is granted, the city could say, we have a plan to remedy this infrastructure system on a, we're going to go out for a general obligation bond, it's going to take us this amount of time to secure that bond, we need to go out to voters. It's going to take us three years to even begin that process. And so therefore, we're requesting a four-year extension to the implementation or the applicability of these standards. If that request is denied based on a number of reasons, or they don't meet the review criteria, then the city would be on the hook for applying or allowing middle housing in those areas.
Thank you.
Yes. And of course, it's, there's a difference between allowing a development in an area and permitting a development in an area. If you're, you know, that development, even if it's allowed, would still need to meet all of the clear and objective standards that go along with securing a building permit and actually being permitted to be developed. And so things like water connections, sewer connections would still be inherent in that process. So there is still more stopgap about the capacity of infrastructure, even if a city doesn't secure an IBTER. Okay. Any other questions? All right, I'm going to move on to House Bill 2003. So House Bill 2003, this is a completely different bill, this is the Housing Needs and the Housing Production Bill. So there's kind of three different aspects of House Bill 2003. I'm going to start here in the middle and work this way, and then I'll come back to this one. So the first item in House Bill 2003 is a Housing Needs Analysis HNA Update Schedule. So historically, those Housing Needs Analysis have been done on kind of a wishy-washy timeline, just based on a city's need for that analysis, or a comprehensive plan update, or something to that effect. There's no really hard and fast schedule for those. The legislature, with the passage of 2003, puts Housing Needs Analysis on a more regular schedule for cities with population 10,000 and over. So for cities within the Portland metro boundary, that schedule is every six years. For cities outside of the Portland metro boundary, that cycle is every eight years. The bill required our department to publish that list of, you know, where a city falls in that cycle back in December of 2019, so all the impacted jurisdictions should know kind of where they fall on that schedule. This is important because it triggers the Housing Production Strategy effort, which is really kind of the heart of House Bill 2003. So the Housing Production Strategy is a new requirement that comes one year after the city has adopted their updated Housing Needs Analysis, and is really in response to Housing Needs Analysis. So housing productions where the HNA would say, here's your need over 20 years. The Housing Production Strategy would be, here's how we're going to achieve or meet that housing need. And here are the specific strategies that we're going to implement to meet that need. The third piece is a Regional Housing Needs Analysis, and the reason why this has got a little dashed line between these two is because this is a joint effort between the Department of Land Conservation Development and Oregon Housing and Community Services, OHCS. The Regional Housing Needs Analysis is really a prototype test pilot project for the Oregon Land Use Planning System. The legislature is requesting OHCS to use the California model to do a regional housing needs analysis, knowing that housing needs don't just stop at a UGB and expand beyond the UGB, and are, should be looked at as a regional, on a regional scale rather than just a local scale. So, like I mentioned, the Regional Housing Needs Analysis is first led by Oregon Housing Community Services. They do the actual analysis, and they run the analysis based on the methodology that's proposed in the legislature. It's, they're, they've kind of separated out into two versions. One version is the one that is adapted from California methodology. We know, we just know that that's not going to fit the Oregon framework and context, because California is very different than Oregon, so we can't really apply that. And so they are adapting that analysis into what they're calling the Oregon methodology, so they're kind of running two parallel analysis. That analysis is required to be completed by September 1st of this year, so they're coming to a close on that analysis. Then, after September 1st, it shifts over to DLCD, and our requirement, or our role, is to analyze their methodology, determine that regional housing needs analysis as a tool that exists within the Oregon land use planning framework, and if it fits into that Oregon land use planning framework. Our recommendation and our analysis goes to the 2021 Oregon Legislature, who is ultimately the decision maker on if, how, when, in what form a regional housing needs analysis continues forward beyond 2021. So it's a little bit of a test, it's, it's a one-time shot, see what sticks. If it doesn't, then we'll try something else, or scrap it altogether, or adapt it in some way. And so this brings me to the Housing Needs Analysis schedule. And so you might imagine the Regional Housing Needs Analysis as a as a gap filler to the local housing needs analysis. We know that the local housing needs analysis framework doesn't always achieve the full outcome that GOATEN intended. And GOATEN Housing, the statewide planning goal, GOATEN. And there's some gaps that need to be filled, whether that's by tweaking the Housing Needs Analysis framework or filling those gaps with a regional housing needs analysis, that's kind of the test. And so you've got the Regional Housing Needs Analysis, the local Housing Needs Analysis, which identifies the need. Again, this is now put on that schedule, six or eight years, so Gladstone would be on that six-year schedule. And we've adopted that, our commissions adopted that schedule. And then the Housing Production Strategy, so you start at the Regional Housing Needs Analysis, you look at housing need at a regional level, you then look at it at a local level, and then the local government should determine or set out a plan to how they're going to achieve that housing need or accommodate that housing need. And so this is really focused on the strategies that the city is going to undergo or employ. And this is any range of actions, policies, tools, measures. It goes beyond just zoning and land use decisions, it's things like providing access to resources, it's syncing or leveraging resource, existing resources at the state, federal, or local level. It's thinking about eliminating barriers, it's thinking about financing, it's thinking about taxing authorities. Really, the entire picture of how a city, what role the city plays in producing housing or facilitating the production of housing. And so we've been working, I'm going to go back here, so we've been working with our Technical Advisory Committee to really think about what are the components of a Housing Production Strategy report, what are the requirements that exist within those strategies, what things do cities for sure need to touch on? How does a city better understand its housing need? And so we've really come up with four real components to a Housing Production Strategy. One is a contextualized housing need, so pulling that regional need and that, and that local housing need together and into one package and trying to understand that in a local context. The second is how the city is engaging both housing consumers and housing producers in this housing production strategy, so what is the engagement effort that takes place to come to a conclusion? And then the third is the strategies that the city is going to propose. The city should think about its timeline for adoption, its timeline for implementation. And then there's a piece in the legislation that talks about the city analyzing the expected magnitude of impact of each strategy. So this is an analysis of, you know, what types of demographics is the strategy going to be focused in on? What kind of income brackets does it address? You know, there's a difference between rezoning property to allow single-family detached homes, and then a strategy to promote the production of publicly subsidized affordable housing. So those are different, and they look at the entire, they should look at the entire picture of housing need over the next 20 years. And then the fourth one is achieving fair and equitable housing outcomes. This is a set of questions where the city should respond on what type of actions the city is taking to accommodate things like affordable home ownership, affordable rental opportunities, access to opportunity areas, employment, and other services, and how they're addressing fair housing law, Oregon and federal fair housing law, and then the location and transportation interplay in housing, locating housing next to transportation services. We know achieves really good outcomes for low-income folks, folks in the middle and income, middle income brackets. So how does, how is the city achieving those outcomes? So again, that was a lot of information, I'm going to stop here before we get to the timeline. Any questions just about the Housing Production Strategy? It's a little theoretical, a little hard to wrap your head around, especially because it's not something that's existed before.
This is John Southgate. This may be more a question for Jennifer, since she's pretty thoroughly aware of all the housing-related initiatives that the city is taking or anticipates taking. I wonder for the Housing Production Strategy, how much of that is sort of embedded in the work, you know, the city's done the downtown revitalization plans, done the housing code audit, it's now looking at housing code changes next year. Will that largely cover what's required in the Housing Production Strategy, or is that above?
Good, good question, John, and I'm going to fade it out a little bit, but I'll try to answer it. I, I think, so just so everybody knows, the city is working on a grant to do a Housing Needs Analysis right now that has a really robust public outreach. So you're in that step, so in one more year, you'll be required to adopt the Housing Production Strategy, and this is somewhat of a new thing for all of us. And I think what we're hoping is that there would be grant money available to pick that work up. And certainly, all of what you just described, John, will go into this document for how to get a more robust housing production. Do you, do you agree with that assessment, Ethan? You've been working on this quite a bit more than I have.
Yeah, the, yeah, sorry, John, go ahead.
Well, I thought it was for me, sorry, Ethan.
Well, I was just going to say, there's, yeah, I would, I would generally agree with that. Really, the, what we want to achieve with the Housing Production Strategy is not this, you know, reinventing the wheel, right? The Housing Needs Analysis feeds directly into the Housing Production Strategy. There's not a whole lot of new work that needs to be done, there's maybe some additional gaps to be filled, but really, the core of that Housing Production Strategy is the HNA. The, we have to live, we have to write the rules in a way where we anticipate a universe where we do not have a regional housing needs analysis. So if you are, if you need help sleeping and you want to read the rules at some point, you'll see no mention of a regional housing needs analysis in the Housing Production Strategy rules. That's just because we don't know if it's going to exist in the future. One of the things that I wanted, and this kind of goes to our, our timeline here, but one of the things I wanted to, one little nuance I wanted to pick up and be sure to clarify is that the Housing Production Strategies are tied to the HNA's, that's correct. But the first Housing Production Strategy that we'll see won't actually take place until 2023. And the reason because, the reason for that is because the legislature wrote the bill to say that the Housing Needs Analysis Schedule can't start until two years after we've adopted the rules for a Housing Production Strategy. So with Gladstone working on its HNA now, if they complete that in 2020, they're not on the hook to produce a Housing Production Strategy in 2021. Instead, what would happen is they would kind of go to the back of the line. So you're looking at a new updated HNA not taking place until 2028, and then your Housing Production Strategy in 2029. So I hope that that makes a little sense, and there's, yeah, just that little nuance there, that it doesn't really start until 2022. The first HPS doesn't happen until 2023. So just some, some deep down details there. All right, I've got a question from Michael again.
Oh, Ethan, are there other cities close by who have already recently done a local housing needs analysis that would also put them at, with what you described at the end of the line, you know, they, they've got another six years to do more?
Yeah, so.
Are we one of the few?
There's a few, I'm trying to think, East Metro, Troutdale, Jennifer probably knows better. But there was some technical assistance out of a previous House Bill, Hospital 4006, that passed in 2018, that provided technical assistance to cities to update their HNA's. So there is kind of this weird process where cities are really just finishing up some HNA's, and they'll just kind of go to the back of the line. So there is quite a few, I wouldn't say that Gladstone's alone or uncommon in that.
Yeah, and if I could just jump in, I, Gladstone's definitely, definitely not alone in that, because Milwaukee recently adopted one. City of Happy Valley will be working on one right now. Troutdale is working on one, West Lynn will also be working on one right now, and they will be adopting kind of on the same schedule that Gladstone will be. I believe there's a few more, I just, I can't quite think of them, but you're definitely in company with a lot of other cities in the metro area.
Yeah.
Well, that, I have a second question then. When I hear regional housing needs analysis, I, I think of neighboring communities, either unincorporated county communities or neighboring cities. If there's both a regional analysis and a local city analysis, will there be opportunities for cities to work with neighboring areas to sort of negotiate which kinds of housing go in which areas in order that the regional needs are met, even though on a city-to-city basis, they may not be precisely met? Do you understand kind of what I'm getting at?
Yeah, and that's one of the major, you're bringing up a major point about the Regional Housing Needs Analysis, and one of the things that we need to consider, you know, does, is the process such that the state does that analysis and then allocates housing need down to the city level without, you know, just here's your housing need, you know, kind of deal with it? Or is there more conversation at a regional level? And, you know, what's the phrase, horse trading at that point, to kind of think through what actually makes sense? And I think, you know, for this first test run, we didn't even get into that conversation because it's just the test, and there's no real implications to the Regional Housing Needs Analysis. And so they've gone the approach, OHCS has gone the approach, where they've brought in these adjustment factors, like historic underproduction of housing, jobs, jobs, housing mix, transportation networks, and trying to right-size the allocation the best they can without having those, you know, one-on-one conversations or regional conversation. So in the future, that potentially could be the case, but not, not currently.
And Ethan, can I just jump in again? So Oregon City was the other one that's working on the Housing Needs Analysis that I forgot. So they'll be on the same timeline, but, but I also, just to address your question a little bit more, I believe that each community will be required to meet their Housing Needs Analysis, so that each community is a complete community, and that you don't get a lopsided region of, you know, really high-end housing in one area and not as high-end housing in another area, but you do have more complete communities in each city.
Yeah, and really, it's, I would say that the real value add of a regional Yeah. And really, um, it's, I would say that the real value add of a regional housing needs analysis is not the allocation of, um, the kind of like luxury housing, single family detached housing. It's even in the bill. It talks about the equitable distribution of publicly supported housing. And that's, I think, really the allocation that will be the, without, I don't want to use strong terms, but kind of the most important allocation, uh, that that process actually brings to the housing planning framework.
So it'll be consistent with the fair share doctrine. It's always been kind of behind the distribution of different, different, uh, levels of affordable housing throughout the state.
Generally, yes. Of course there's nuance there, but I'll, I'll say generally, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. So timeline again, the HNA update schedule that's already completed will be rolling in some formal rules about that update schedule, just because it is the trigger for the housing production strategy into the housing production strategy rules. Those housing production strategy rules will live in, um, OAR, Oregon Administrative Rules, Chapter 660, Division 7 and 8, which, as planners know, is the HNA process. So it'll just be an extension of that process in rule. Our timeline for adopting those in contrast to the House Bill 2001, there's no hard and fast deadline. You know, we don't need to adopt the rules by December 31st of 2020. That's just the longer we wait to adopt those housing production rules, the longer we wait to see an HNA and the longer we wait to see a housing production strategy. So we're hoping to get those done by the end of 2020. That adoption schedule for the rules is slated for, very similar to the larger metro cities slated for a September 1st hearing at our commission. And then they'll hold open the public hearing until their November meeting, while they'll, uh, hopefully adopt those rules. For the Regional Housing Needs Analysis, independent of the Housing Production Strategy work, the OHC S deadline for their analysis is September 1st of this year and the next month and a half or so. And then it's DLCD's turn to have a six month window to analyze what they've done, make recommendations to the legislature. And we're required to submit that report by March 1st of 2021. Within all of this, and we've talked about it a little bit already, is the local assistance, uh, grants that are available. And in, sorry, I lost my mouse here. Whoops. In House Bill 2003, the legislature allocated a million dollars to city or to the department to allocate to cities to do a, either update their HNA, work on a, um, prototype housing production strategy or a housing strategy implementation plan, which is kind of a holdover from that House Bill 4006 that I mentioned before. That local planning assistance application period has closed. That closed actually April 30th. We're in the process now of negotiating contracts with jurisdictions who requested that assistance. For House Bill 2001, I'm going to back way up to House Bill 2001. The department was allocated three and a half million dollars to assist cities in code work or an infrastructure based time extension request application. There was no breakdown between, you know, 50% of that money goes to infrastructure or 50% goes to code assistance. There was no breakdown like that. It was just based on the applications that we received. Right in the middle of our application period, uh, we got notification from the legislature saying that, uh, there was an 11 and a half percent cut to that, um, amount of money. And so we had to send back about a million and a quarter of that, uh, technical assistance dollars. But thankfully we were still able to, um, fund every single project that we received an application for. So, uh, they might not have gotten the whole amount that they requested, but, uh, we were able to fund at least a majority of each project. So that's the technical assistance. I'm going to open it up here for any kind of discussion that you want to have. I've put an email address here where all of the written comments that we receive on any bill, House Bill 2001, 2003, or any of the housing work that the state is, uh, embarking on goes to housing.dlc d@state.or.us. That goes a lot of places. So it's really important, critical information for our team as we are drafting these rules to hear your thoughts, your comments. That also goes to the Housing Law Making Advisory Committee, the RAC, and then it also goes to the appropriate TAC. Um, and then all of that gets collected and goes to our Land Conservation Development Commission in their big packet of materials that they receive for each, uh, meeting. So, open it up for any questions. I see one from Liz. Oh, I think I have to allow to talk and unmute. Liz, you might, there you go. Hi.
Hi, sorry. I did not mean to raise my hand.
Oh, okay. All right. Any other questions, comments? I want to be sensitive of our time. I know, um, we've got until about 6:30. So only a couple more minutes, but.
Well, Ethan, I just wanted to say thank you for your presentation and Jennifer, thank you for awarding Gladstone Technical Assistance Funds. It would be very difficult for us to meet these requirements and I'm happy to say that, that Gladstone is on their way. We should have a housing needs analysis for the Planning Commission and the City Council to review by August 25th. So there's a lot of good work being done in Gladstone, but we certainly could not do it without your partnership.
All right. Well, hearing no additional questions or comments, what I'll do is, uh, package this up and I'll send it over to Jennifer. Maybe Jennifer, you can distribute out or, okay.
Sure.
And, um, you know, feel free to either send me an email or, uh, send any comments, letters, questions, concerns to housing.dlc d@state.or.us. Um, if you're interested in viewing any or listening in on any of the committee meetings, please be sure to go to that RAC website and you'll see all the times and dates there. So.
Oh, thank you so much for this. There's so many, many missing, so many moving pieces on this. It's just crazy. And I'm very glad that this is something you guys are passionate about and that you like, that you're helping us with. So if there's anything more you need from us, just let us know.
Absolutely. Thanks all.
Thank you.
All right. Good night. Thank you all.
Okay. So for those that are staying, going to go into the second phase of this meeting, we're going to get out of this Zoom meeting and then go into a separate one. So I'll meet you on the other side.